I'm going to go ahead and call this February 19th, 2019 meeting of the Whitefish City Council to order. Thanks everyone for coming this evening and I'll go ahead and ask Craig Workman to lead us in the pledge tonight. We'll move on to communications from the public. This is time set aside for the public to comment on items that are on the agenda but not advertised as a public hearing. So if you're here to talk on any of the items not listed under item number six, now would be your opportunity to comment. For the record, your name and address when you approach the council. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Brandy Pierman. My address is 249 Wallen Way, Whitefish, Montana. I own the farmhouse inn and kitchen. Thank you for considering my request to change the parking to two hours on Lupfer Avenue. After I sent in my letter, I spent some time talking to some other business owners on that street and some other residents of Whitefish. It seems a few people are concerned about the parking in the area. It appears it could be unsafe and possibly inefficient. I'm particularly concerned about the safety of myself and my employees and the customers at the farmhouse. My discussion with Amy Alexander, she's the owner of Knit and Needles, was of particular concern to me. Her shop was recently broken into in the middle of the night and her cash register was stolen. I have here a copy of a Crime Prevention Handbook. It was published by the National Institute of Justice. I don't know if you guys want to take a look at it or not?
Sure, I can take it.
It lists cars left unattended for extended periods of time, such as during the workday or overnight, as a risk factor for car theft and other crimes. I've seen cars parked on that street for several days at a time without being moved. They piled up with snow. And based on my research, this could be a contributing factor in the crime in the area. And this also makes it really difficult to plow that road, which is another safety hazard. And several people I spoke with have pointed out that they would also like to see the parking changed to two hours on both sides of Lupfer Avenue between First Street and Railway. And it would also help to have the parking changed to diagonal on the even side of the road. It would just make it more efficient. This parking change would help my business, the farmhouse, and also the other businesses on the street. And it would improve the safety and bring additional revenue to the city of Whitefish. The farmhouse inn is projected to bring in considerably more revenue than the prior business of the hostel. So I really hope you will consider these changes. Thank you.
Thanks very much for your comments.
Good evening, so the council. My name is Steve Pierman. That was my wife. I don't want to berate too much of what she said. I pretty much the same things to say. I would add to what she said that it would also be a lot easier and more efficient to plow that street if the parking was rearranged a little bit. I know that currently it has, they have a hard time plowing down there, especially with cars being left unattended for long periods of time. So that there is a way to create diagonal parking on both sides of the street, limited to two hours, I think it would benefit not just us, but I think it would benefit the city in many ways. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Appreciate the comments.
Hello, thank you for listening. My name is Jody Smith and I'm also a business owner in Whitefish. I'm here to support their decision for parking in front of their own business. Anything that will increase revenue is good for Whitefish and good for other businesses. And just taking into consideration what is right in front of their business is why I'm here to back it up. Thank you.
Thanks, Jody. Thanks for the comments tonight. Further public comments tonight? All right.
Hi, my name's Malachi Pierman. I support the Lupfer Avenue parking change request to two hour parking. I know this has been requested in the past but denied. At the time, there wasn't a parking garage to accommodate the city's parking needs. Now there is, it seems reasonable to grant this request. The apartments across the street have their own parking lot. The employees who work at other businesses on the street have their own parking in the alley or just short walk to the parking garage. The farmhouse is my family's business. It's important to our family that their request is granted. The request change would benefit not only our business but other businesses in the area and because of the resort tax, the entire city of Whitefish. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Further comment tonight?
Hi, my name is Jonah Talaga and I'm their friend. And we would really like if you could change the parking to two hours because this would reduce the crime in the area and help local businesses to bring additional revenue back to the city of Whitefish.
Thanks very much. Who's next?
Hello there. My name is Vera Talaga. I'm friends with the Pierman family. And I really would like if you may hear this hearing about a parking on the Lupfer Street, that both sides will be diagonally, that it will be much better even with the traffic and snow plowing, just if you may help somehow. Thank you so much for hearing me.
Thanks very much.
Good evening. My name is Mark Talaga and the Pierman family is our friends. And the same, I don't want to repeat myself, but again, we support them in the request that Lupfer Street would have parking for two hours. And the reason is that it reduce the crime and bring additional revenue for the city. Thank you.
Your address, please, just for the record, if you don't mind? Your home address for the record?
1131 Eagleview Ranch Road, Whitefish.
Great, thanks very much. Further comment tonight? Not seeing any. We'll move on to volunteer boards. We'll stay with the audience. Any volunteer board reports? Not seeing any. How about the council? Richard?
Just a point of order, if I might. Because I'm not sure if you understand how things kind of work with the development of your comments tonight, and maybe that would help.
Sure.
First of all, I want to say thank you to the young people because it's so important for us and for you to be part of Whitefish. So thank you very much for that. So at the end of the meeting tonight, however long it goes, that's when we normally would take up any kind of discussion on your request. And it's up to members of council how they want to handle that, just so you know. So if you're going to sit here and wonder when are they going to decide, that's how it works.
I called earlier.
Oh, okay.
They told us to go now, so I'm sorry if it was not...
No, no, it's perfect. You did a wonderful job. And again, thanks to the young people.
Until the end, so you take your time.
That was the right time to comment, so thanks again. Volunteer board reports from the council. Are there any? Frank?
Park Board.
Thanks.
Couple of things at the park board. We approved the proposed use of the Verizon Tower funds for the baseball park. And they're going to improve lighting and some plumbing in the bathrooms. It was recommended to them that if they're going to do that, that they look at some what I'll call more energy efficient and water saving methods or appliances, I'll call them. And they took that under advisement. We'll wait and see what they actually do with it, but that's what they wanted to do. The other is, as you've seen in your park or in your packet, the resolution that's going to be before you this evening incorporates a couple of the other matters, which is the expansion or the improvements to Armory Park and the possible expansion of the dog park.
Thanks, Frank. Further reports from the council? Not seeing any. I'll move on to the consent agenda. Any changes or additions to the February 4, 2019 meeting minutes? Richard?
I'll have three corrections to the minutes.
Thanks.
At your pleasure.
Please do.
On page 20 of the packet, page two of the minutes, in the very first sentence where it starts, Councillor Hildner at the end, continue to be vigilant, not vigilante, but if we can make that change, please. And then moving on down, in the after councillor comments, that first, or excuse me, the second paragraph, where it says councillor Sweeney stated he has had the opportunity over the, and then it should say passed, several weeks. So just add the word passed at that point. Moving on down in the next paragraph, the one that starts Mayor Maulfeld, and it says, one is a financial analysis, the other is the environmental, and then I think the word analysis goes in there.
Okay, with those corrections, can I please have a motion for approval?
So move.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded by councillor Sweeney. Further discussion on the consent agenda as amended? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign. And the motion does carry unanimously. Michelle, which brings us on to our one public hearing of the evening, which will be item 6A, Resolution 19-2, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Whitefish, Montana, to establish an increase in the public usage fee for recreational programs. Maria?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My staff report is in your packet, as are the supplemental documents and the new fee schedule that is also up behind you. As part of the budget process, we evaluate our fees. And this last process that we went through, we determined that the revenues did not offset the expenditures of our recreation programs. As well, we wanted to look into the option of a resident versus non-resident fee structure. And so we assessed our fees. And as we did that assessment, we looked at the cost of each program by evaluating the staffing needs, our supplies, contracted services, and then determined the cost of the program and the typical level of participation in each program. From that, we then determine a fee to cover the costs. As we did this standard process that we do quite regularly, we determined that it was pretty apparent this time that some of the fees would potentially price families out of the ability to participate in a recreational program, specifically our summer day camp. So we went about looking at some other options for structuring our fee schedule. And the one option that we came up with was a membership option, more like a rec center for the Roy Duff Memorial Armory for our summer day camp. In this option, residents who utilize our programs as a daily form of childcare would see a reduction in cost from some programs in previous years or minimal increase to their costs. However, residents who use it somewhat regularly might see a slight increase. And then those non-residents who use it for recreational purposes would see the greatest increase. As we evaluated both of those types of fee schedules, we developed a pros and cons list, which we reviewed with you during the work session. And from that determined somewhat of a hybrid fee schedule that was proposed to the park board during their January meeting. This fee schedule, which is the fee schedule that you see behind you, utilizes the membership option for summer day camp, but then the basic rate increase for all other programming. The park board did unanimously approve to recommend this to the council. And this is what was brought before you all during your February 4 work session. And then at the conclusion of that work session, council directed staff to move forward with the proposed fee schedule, but to also define resident as one whose primary residence is within the Whitefish School District or is an attendee of the Whitefish School District. To also end reimbursements for cancellations, but develop language that allows for the city manager to offer a reimbursement for extenuating circumstances. To develop a non-resident membership fee for summer day camp, which is added to the fee schedule. And to continue to cover a portion of the administrative costs through the general fund. There is no financial requirement for the implementation of this fee schedule. And I can answer any questions, but I, as well as the park board, do respectfully recommend that you adopt this resolution, implementing the increase to the recreational programs and this be made effective April 1st for the summer programming and July 1st for all of the school year type programming.
Thanks, Maria. Any questions for Maria from the council? Any questions? Not seeing any. We did advertise for a public hearing on what...
Do, have one quick question. I'm sorry. Have you had any feedback from the public, using public, about the fee schedule now that it's under discussion or has been under discussion at the park board level?
We've not received phone calls or letters from the public regarding this. We've had internal staff conversations regarding the changes. And specifically, it comes down to the field trips. And field trips were always part of summer day camp. We're still offering field trips. And in fact, there is still a field trip incorporated into the summer camp program. But you could also choose to separately do field trips for your children on Tuesdays and Thursdays as a separate program, just like tennis is a separate program or rock climbing is a separate program. Those field trips begin at 9:00 AM and end at 4:30 PM. And so the only feedback that we've received is that there are some individuals who may need to get their children to a field trip sooner. We do have a program available. It's called Summer Day Camp, from 7:30 to 5:30. And you could also, if you were a member, you could send your child to Summer Day Camp and we could get them to that field trip. The field trip would be an additional cost. If you were just paying for Summer Day Camp every day, you would pay for that Summer Day Camp if you needed to get your child there by 7:30. And then if you wanted them to go on a field trip, that would be an additional cost. That's the one piece of feedback that we've received.
Thanks. Thanks, Richard. Further questions from the council? We did advertise on a public hearing on what will be Resolution 19-2. Are there any public comments this evening on this item? Any public comments? I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and turn it back to council for a motion.
I would move to approve Resolution 1902, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Whitefish to establish an increase in the public usage fees for recreation programs.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by councillor Henin. Any discussion on the motion?
John, I just like, I mean, this is, it's not a misnomer. We are raising some rates in this. But one of the things that Maria has done in bringing this to us is she's really worked this problem in managing the costs and managing what price increases, if any, in all these programs. So that she's really thought about the people that use this on a daily basis and need it, and tried very hard and done, I think, a great job of coming up with a great idea on how to do this best and most economically for those that use these programs. So I want to say thank you to her and great work.
Yeah, I echo those thoughts. Your staff report was clear. It was concise. I very much appreciated the fact that we were presented alternatives to consider. So thanks again. Great work to yourself and your staff. With that said, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign. And that motion does carry unanimously. Michelle. That brings us on to item number seven, which will be Resolution 19-3, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Whitefish, Montana, to authorize application of land and water conservation fund assistance. And we'll stay with Maria for this item as well.
So the land and water conservation fund is a matching grant program that helps local communities provide open space and recreation opportunities. It also encourages a full partnership between national, state, and local governments in planning and funding outdoor recreation projects. Staff and I were made aware of the availability of LWCF funds for this year just a couple months ago. And we decided to take on a rather ambitious project of working through the Armory Park Master Plan. It's a 2012 master plan. Phases one and two have been completed and we would like to start working on phase three. So during the January park board meeting, we did discuss the potential applying for LWCF. And the park board did direct staff to move forward with that application. Just to kind of reflect on it, phase one included the dog park expansion and the construction of the pond area. Phase two was the development of the lacrosse field and renovation of the armory, which included the new flooring, paint, party room, and the energy efficient heating and lighting. So phase three includes the construction of a playground, extension of the shared use path, drainage work, parking lot improvements, additional dog park expansion, and an adult fitness area. And we do have matching city funds identified from resort tax, stormwater funds, impact fees, parkland acquisition and development, and possibly some parks and recreation funds with some site amenities. We've worked with Bruce Booty, the landscape architect, to update the map of the park to include the existing conditions, as well as to show the proposed future phases. And there were a couple of revisions that we've made to the plan. Those include relocating the play area and the pavilion into the southeastern portion of the park, adding the adult fitness area and some landscaping. And the park board did approve that plan on February 12. So this work will enhance our largest park in Whitefish, adding much needed amenities, including the playground, which will be used by our summer day camp and then anyone utilizing Roy Duff Memorial Armory for things such as birthday parties, events such as school reunions, family gatherings, the annual pumpkin patch, we assume would probably use it. The extension of the path includes a one-mile loop system, which provides opportunities for exercise and sightseeing. And it also enhances the dog park, offering a leash dog walking area to the area where you can recreate with your dog. There are necessary drainage improvements that need to take place out at the armory, hopefully helping to alleviate some of the high groundwater impacts that we see in the park. The paving would provide access to the southeastern portion of the park, specifically for the playground path system, adult fitness areas, softball fields, lacrosse field, and the future pavilion. Our adult fitness adds a multi-generational amenity to the park by providing fitness activities for our adult aging population. And this is consistent with our Parks and Recreation Master Plan, which the main recommendation was to implement a focused priority on adult fitness. And then the wag dog park expansion is still in discussion as to the amount of that expansion. Park board determined it would be up to 1.5 acres adjacent to the existing park area, but that will be finalized and determined at a later park board meeting. But it is included in the plan. So we are seeking approval to apply for this grant and to complete the Armory Park Master Plan, the third phase of it anyhow. We do feel that this is the appropriate time to move forward with the application, as we have identified $265,520 in matching funds within the existing FY19 budget that will also be transferred over to the FY20 budget. We do have to provide a 50% match in order to apply for this grant. We've determined that the project is around $511,000. And we've identified $80,000 in resort tax, $92,000 in impact fees, $20,000 in stormwater funds, around $9,000 in parkland acquisition and development. And we have received a donation from Burke Playground for $39,500 and $11,000 donation from Greenfield Outdoor Fitness for the adult fitness equipment. And then the Whitefish Animal Group has dedicated $14,000 to this project. So our matching funds due total $265,520. And we are seeking $245,503 in LWCF monies. The application is included in your packet for your reference. And if you don't have any other questions, I do respectfully recommend, as well as the park board, that you adopt this resolution that would authorize us to apply for the land-water conservation fund assistance.
Thanks, Maria. Any questions for Maria on her staff report? Any questions for Maria? Not seeing any. We will need a motion, as recommended in Maria's staff report. Melissa?
I move to approve Resolution number 19-03, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Whitefish, Montana, to authorize application of land and water conservation fund assistance.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by councillor Williams. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. And those opposed, like sign. And that motion does carry unanimously. Michelle. Thanks, Maria.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We will move on to item number eight, which is communications from our assistant city manager and finance director. I'll turn it over to Dana for our review of the FY19 second quarter financial report. Dana?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My staff report can be found on page 332 of your packet. So we've made it through half a year for FY19 and we're well on our way through the next quarter. We have, in front of you, at first glance, might look a little startling. However, it is not the case. When you look at our property tax supported funds, which give us a really good idea of how we're doing, the general fund is seeing an increase in cash reserves of about $431,000 as of the midpoint for FY19. That is offset quite heavily by reductions in the Parks and Rec Fund, Law Enforcement Fund, Library Fund, and Fire and Ambulance Fund. Those changes, however, were anticipated based on how we budgeted for FY19. Our intent was to have our cash reserves in the general fund so that as economic issues come up, we can easily transfer those funds instead of keeping them within a more restricted fund such as Parks and Rec. So overall, there are very few issues. Parks and Rec, really, the decrease from the prior year midpoint was due to the purchase of a bucket truck, a very significant capital purchase. One time, we anticipated that with funding through the reserves that they had at year end. And so we're just waiting to collect the revenues for the rest of the period. So that's the only one that really has a negative cash balance. So technically, that's borrowing funds from the general fund. But again, that's an expected purchase, one that is not concerning whatsoever. And it will be corrected by the next quarter. So overall, like I said, the city's property tax supportive funds do remain in good financial condition with cash reserves overall increasing about 12.1%, or $231,000. Of course, we always work toward increasing those cash reserves. So we're hoping that we can do that in the FY20 budget. We would like to be at that 20% amount, like other communities around us. Some financial highlights that we have, we've seen really great resort tax collections so far through fiscal year 19. They're 7% higher from last year at mid-year. A lot of that is seen in our lodging and bars and restaurants. And retail continues to see an increase, but just not quite at the same amount. So assuming that trend continues, we will see additional property tax relief for the FY20 budget. Ambulance service charges are up 18% as well. We did have an automatic increase go into effect July 1st. One of the things to keep in mind, though, with ambulance services charges is that while we can charge for that revenue, Medicare, Medicaid come in and take most of that away. So we do have that challenge ahead of us with our ambulance services, but we are not unique. That is how every ambulance service out there is operating. License and permit revenues in the building code fund are up 22% from the prior year second quarter and due total 71% of the FY19 budget. Again, we're only 50% through. So we're seeing a very strong building activity within the city. As you've seen, many projects come through here. We will slowly start to collect those as well. Impact fee revenue is the big one here we're seeing. We actually have revenue that is 128% over the prior year. Some of that is just the timing of when those projects are collected, once approved here. Those actually do not include any of the new rates, though, that we adopted. So that's something to take into account. As we move through this next quarter, we'll see how those are adjusted down and/or up depending. Overall, our impact fees are going up, but it's going to also... Overall, our impact fees are going up, but it's going to also depend on each project how that is applied. So the other one that I wanted to make note of is municipal court fines and forfeitures. While in this report, it shows that there was a slowdown about 4% down from last year. That's not the case. That was a timing issue with the way that we collected receipts from the court at December 31st. So they really are, if we were to move those monies back to December, they're actually up 10% from the prior year. So our court is still operating higher than the prior year, and that's continued through the first half of FY19. So I provided additional detail in my report as usual, and overall, we're looking really good. FY19's shaping up to be a great year. We're seeing increases in our returns on our investments, strong development, increased resort tax. We are looking forward to our capital planning that we're working on and preparing the FY20 budget. We're looking forward to the challenge of providing a budget that not only includes the expected levels of service from our citizens and visitors alike, but also takes into consideration the possibilities for growth and sustainability. Based on the forecasts that were provided by the University of Montana's Bureau of Business and Economic Research at a seminar we attended, the outlook for calendar year 2019 remains positive with only a slight projected slowdown. But again, we're seeing really strong numbers in the first half of 2019, which is our, we will see, I think, really strong numbers moving into our second half of fiscal year 19, first half of 2019. We get all confused about fiscal years and calendar years. But I think for us, though, we won't see that slowdown during fiscal year 19. So that's what I meant. But if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at any time.
Thanks very much, Dana. Any questions for Dana on her reports? I had a quick question, Dana. So you reported that we're about 12 percentage, 12% above where we were this time last year in terms of our general fund or cash reserves. I forget what our cash reserve as a percentage of the total budget was for the adopted FY19 budget. Was it around 13%?
So we came in with reserves just under 15%, I believe. What's going to happen, though? This is just comparing the cash balance from the prior year, so that's not really calculating what your reserves as a percentage of budget are, which is that figure that we use in budgeting. We obviously will look to increasing that, but as expenditures increase, to increase the cash reserve percentage just gets harder and harder every time. So it's important to take those opportunities when you can to increase that reserve to budget, but it is going to be a higher cash balance than the prior year when we get to June 30th.
Do you have an estimate what that may be or what we're looking at in terms of adoption or consideration for the FY20 budget if you were to look in your crystal ball at this point? And if that's not a fair question, just let me know.
Yeah, you know, other than what we projected in the fiscal year 19 budget, I don't know that I could, I haven't taken a strong enough look. Really, it depends on how the last half of the year goes. That's when we collect summer camp registration fees. We've got, that's when big parks revenues comes in. We still have about half of our taxes and assessments. I can tell you that our taxes and assessments that we collect came in pretty strong, so that was a good sign. We got our big lump payment in December, which is typical, and a strong January payment, so no concerns there. But I haven't seen anything that would make me be worried that we were not tracking with the budget in hopes of increasing cash reserves, so.
Great. Thanks for that response, and thanks for the first half report this evening. With that said, we'll move on to Item Number Nine, which is communications from our city manager. You have Adam's written report enclosed with the packet. Any questions for Adam on his reports?
I should have read. Adam, you said you had meetings with the BNSF officials to discuss outstanding lease and easement requests and including an underpass. What underpass are you talking about?
That's the one under the viaduct. So it goes just north of the O'Shaughnessy Center and looks over to the railway district.
At some point, I would really like to know, I know this is a brief report, but I'd like to have some better understanding of the details on each of the items that you've identified here, and it doesn't have to be here, but I think I would like to be brought up to speed on where we are in moving these things along because, as we all know, at least with, and it's their bureaucracy, I know, but moving things along with BNSF gets protracted, and I'd just like to know that we're really making some progress.
Yeah, and that was kind of the main reason for the meeting is we just were not making much progress. So I think kind of having that meeting, I think, brought everyone onto the same page and plus knowing who do we go to? I mean, it was just recently, and I don't know when they split this out, but just recently, if you have a lease, you go to one person. If you have an easement, you go to another person. And it bounced around. I mean, over the last eight months, I've talked to four or five different people all saying that it should be with them, and then all of a sudden so-and-so got transferred and someone else is new and it needs to go to them. And so we were able to get all but one of what I feel are the key players onto the phone conversation. But I do believe that even though that one person wasn't there, I think we made a lot of headway. I think we kind of have a good direction for where we're going, and we can certainly provide to the council kind of an update on what each of these things are that have kind of been hanging out there for a while, let you know on a map where they are, what connections they're going to make, and we can do that for you.
Yeah, I mean, the one that is kind of making me crazy is the one of the Birch Point Drive to West Lake Shore Drive connector. I mean, it's like, how long have we been working on that? I'd like to have some better feeling where we really are, what our next steps are.
Yep, we can do that.
I think there's two ways we can approach this, Frank. I think whenever we receive, you know, Adam's, you know, bi-monthly managers' report, certainly feel free to ask him during a meeting for additional information, just like you just did. At the same time, Adam, perhaps if there are updates of significance related to some of your meetings that you feel may be of interest or important for the council to be aware of, perhaps you can just expand on this report for those particular items.
Yep, absolutely.
Just as a suggestion.
Yep.
Okay, that'd be great. And plus, you know, of course, we do have Adam's quarterly goals report that I've found to be very helpful and informative and keeps us abreast of most of the major, you know, issues and items that we're juggling here as a council. So, you know, again, I recommend that we all pay attention to that document as well when Adam takes the time to prepare that on a quarterly basis. But duly noted. Adam, anything else to report on?
Yeah, at the time of this writing, we had fully expected to have McGrath's fire report back for this meeting, but there was a death in McGrath's family. I believe it was his father that passed away, which kind of pushed things off, so we thought we would be able to do it on the March 4th meeting. After being in discussions with him and kind of looking at a draft that was sent over, there's some corrections and things that need to be made, and I think he said, "Well, get me back your corrections by March something or other." So I don't know what timeline he's kind of thinking, so we need to touch base with him and see where that's going, but this could get pushed out a little bit. We as staff don't want it pushed out too much because there are some budget implications with what we'd like to do with this document, so we're going to try to push for sooner rather than later. But it could be April 1st, maybe, because I know we have April 15th locked up. And if there are any questions about that, I know I'm going to be reviewing some things with staff in regards to the State of the City address that the mayor and I would like to start doing. But if you have any questions, feel free to ask, and there'll be some logistical stuff, you know, moving forward as to how that's going to play out, but we will need all of your attendance at 5:00 PM that evening, so.
Thanks. Thanks, Adam. Thanks very much. We'll move on to Item 10A. Finally, right? We have Item 10A, which is a letter from Brandy Peirman, who testified earlier during public comment, the farmhouse inn and kitchen, requesting the council consider changing parking on the even-numbered curbside of Lupfer Avenue to two-hour parking. Who would like to begin the discussion on this letter? Richard?
I'm happy to begin the discussion, but I'm not sure how far we can go with it because my thought is that Public Works really needs to take a look at this proposal and then get back to us from the city perspective as to what the impacts might be with both changing for angle parking and for limiting parking to two hours, what those implications are. I certainly appreciate the comments that you all brought to council, but I think it's, we need to kind of sit back and have staff take a look at those implications so that we can make an informed decision that benefit not only your business, not only the neighbors, but the entire city. So that's my feeling, and others may have some comments to go with it.
Frank?
I concur. I think that's where we've got to go. I know at one point, we looked at angled parking on, I think, Lupfer at one particular point, and I don't remember why we decided not to or whether we couldn't or not, but we probably ought to dust that off to determine what the real reason was and see if we can do it. But that's clearly where we have to go next to even consider this, in my view.
Craig?
Yeah, I was just going to mention, I don't see that there's enough room, enough right-of-way on Lupfer between Railway and First to have angled or head-in parking on both sides without making that a one-way street. There simply wouldn't be enough room to maintain two-way traffic and have angled parking on both sides. When I read the request, I was originally thinking you guys were looking for, looking to maintain the parallel parking on the west side, but just make that parallel parking two-hour. Does that comply with your requests? If I can ask a question of the...
Yes, please, and just name and address again for the record.
Brandy Peirman again, 249 Wallen Way, Whitefish. So yes, my original request was just for the parking on the even-numbered side of the street to change it to two-hour parking, which would definitely help us out a lot. But after doing pretty extensive research on this, I came to the conclusion that really there shouldn't be a reason why we couldn't change the parking to two hours on both sides of the street, and further changing it to diagonal parking would also benefit everyone, I think. I did speak with a few people who were involved with this request the last time that it came through here. I believe it was mostly denied because this was before we had a parking garage, and there was a lot of concern about just, in general, just not having enough parking for the city to park in. But now that we have the garage, hopefully that will be okay. I was told that, I'm sorry, I don't remember the entity you discussed earlier, that entity should come out and make sure that this is safe and is going to, you know, make sense. But I was told that they were out before and did determine that there wasn't enough room for diagonal parking on both sides of the street. However, we may need to change that to a one-way street if that were to happen. I have considered that quite a bit as it will impact my business specifically, and I don't think that that will be an issue for us. Whether there's a safety issue, I have to leave that to the professionals, but for us and impacting customers driving down that street and my family and employees and such, I don't think it's going to be an issue the way that street kind of loops around on Railway there. I don't think it's going to affect it negatively, so hopefully that's helpful.
Craig, did you have anything to add or any further questions for Brandy?
Nope, I think I'm good.
Okay. Have you had an opportunity to review this in any detail since receiving the letter?
You know, I really haven't. Tonight's the first time I'd heard the angled parking request, and just at a first glance, it would create a one-way road northbound on Lupfer between Railway and First. So I think that may create some intersection issues at Railway and Lupfer where there's already kind of a one-way coming in, so we'll want to look at that in a little more detail and likely have a public hearing for this because it would affect the entire block. And I know there's quite a bit of residential parking on the east side, and so changing any of the other parking, any parking on that street could create some issues with the block. So we can move it forward, though, if the council would like.
I'll leave that to the council. My personal thoughts are you can certainly, your department can look at this in terms of feasibility of the request. I would caution moving forward with a public hearing until you get direction from the city council as to whether or not they feel that diagonal parking, reclassifying the street to one-way, and changing the parking duration to two hours, I mean, those are some fairly significant changes, and they need to be consistent with our adopted downtown master plan and city transportation plan. So I would hope that before we go to that step, Craig, if you could just bring us back your professional opinion from Public Works as to the merits of this request, I'd certainly appreciate that before advertising for a public hearing on this item.
Absolutely, sir. I wasn't trying to put the cart before the horse.
I know you weren't, yeah.
I simply meant that any final decision would warrant a public hearing. But yeah, no, I'll draft a memo and come back with some recommendations.
Great. Appreciate that. Thanks, Brandy.
Thank you.
Thanks for your family's time tonight and your friends.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll start with communications, and Richard, you're it.
We were in receipt of a letter regarding Republic Services on solid waste, or not solid waste, but on refuse collection, and I think it's the same letter all of us received. And I had the same response as the person who wrote to us, that it was, it was not as seamless a transfer of power between the two companies as they let on. I mean, I was on automatic bill pay. All of a sudden, that went away, and I was told, you know, "You've got 30 days to pay the bill," just as these people pointed out, and I thought, "Well, wait a minute. I'm already on an auto pay. What's the problem?" And I had to go through the whole process all over again. I'm not sure that the public fully understood the rollout of the impact of those, that transfer. In retrospect, I think there's maybe that Republic could have done maybe some outreach or, "Here it comes." But so I think that their letter, the points in their letter are well-taken, and I'm not sure what that may do as people think, all of a sudden are going to come up, may come up with late bills, and particularly those who are not computer literate, those who are not, or may not even have computer access to do the changes that have always, you know, just the check came out of the bank or out of their credit card, and all of a sudden that just went away. I don't know if there's anything we can do to help clarify that, but maybe the pilot is listening since Heidi's not here today. So is there anything we could do with that? Craig?
Craig.
You know, I'm not sure how much correspondence the city had with North Valley or Republic before the rollout. I know that the letter was mailed to all the customers, but quite honestly, it caught me by surprise, too. So I don't know, Dana, if you had anything to add.
I checked with Rose today, being that she does communicate with North Valley probably the most frequently. She's been in contact with the new general manager for Republic Service to kind of reach out to him and see. As soon as we were aware, you know, I know that Rose asked Jenny to update our Public Works Facebook page, get that information out. North Valley did send out a letter with a bill trying to inform people of the changes. I think changes like this are very difficult, not only as a customer, but we have two entities combining to transfer private account information between two entities. I think you've signed up with North Valley. You can't transfer your personal financial information to another company without your, you know, acceptance of that. So I could understand why they didn't continue the auto pay. I think if we ever transferred our auto pay account to another entity, we would probably have a lot of legal cases against us, but I understand the frustration. Rose is in contact with them. It does sound like they're going to have some new things where they have, they're all getting new trucks, so that people will see new trucks. It sounds like they're going to be blue. And they're going to be working with their staff on training with communications between their staff and their customers because of this rollout not going as well. They've committed to us that they will work on that training. In fact, some of Republic's staff are going to meet with Chris and Bree, our utility billing service clerks, to kind of go over, being that they're all of our same customers, to go over, you know, the issues that we've had. So obviously, we hope that this wouldn't happen again. I don't know that our contract with North Valley had any language that said if you get bought out, you have to notify us, so I think that's something that we need to consider if we're going to contract again for services like this, is to have a clause in there that states any type of buyout we need to be made aware of well in advance for education purposes. So that's all I have for you right now. So that's all I have for you right now.
Just, there's a frustration and then, you know, and I don't know if anybody else got frustrated sitting at their computer trying to make it all happen. Maybe I'm just old.
Is that all, Richard?
Yeah, for old, yes.
Andy?
Oh, nothing.
Thanks Andy. Ryan?
Nothing.
Thanks Ryan. Katie?
Nothing.
Thanks Katie. Glad to have you back. Frank?
Nothing tonight.
Wow. Melissa?
Nothing to add.
Well, I'm going to make up for all of you. I've just got a few items, only eight. Um, anyway, I was saddened to read about, uh, the passing of George Gardner. I know that many of you, uh, probably served with George on various committees here at the city. He was on the architectural review committee from 2003 to 2015. He served on our growth policy ad hoc committee. He was on the ad hoc Whitefish Citywide Transportation Plan Advisory Committee. And most recently, I know I had the pleasure of serving with him on the city hall, uh, steering and parking garage ad hoc committee. And always brought such a flavor and unique perspective to all the boards he sat on. And, uh, I think that the community was really at his heart in all the decisions that he helped, uh, make here at the city. So I'd just like to extend our thoughts and prayers, uh, to Heather and Mike Brentis and of course, uh, their families. Second, Adam, our retreat is March 21st and 2nd, correct?
Correct.
So similar to last year, if you guys have any ideas, even draft goals, short-term, long-term goals, things you'd like to talk about at our retreat, if you don't mind sending those over to me. If you don't, that's okay as well. Um, we can make it fluid as we have in the past, but feel free to shoot me over, um, any thoughts, ideas you have for our retreat on March 21st and 22nd. I wanted to remind the public that we do have a few vacancies available on city boards. Uh, we have two positions open for the Whitefish Lake and Lake Shore Protection Committee. We have one position available and open for the Board of Appeals and one position on the Board of Adjustment. So hoping to get those seats filled sooner than later. I wanted to remind the council, uh, the public as well as the planning board, if they're listening, that we do have a joint, uh, planning board and city council meeting this, uh, Thursday night here in council chambers. I believe we're going to begin around 7:00 PM after the regular, uh, planning board, uh, meeting adjourns. We'll be joined by our inclusionary zoning, uh, steering committee, as well as our affordable housing, uh, steering committee members. And of course it's advertised and open to the public as well. I envision it's going to probably be a pretty lengthy meeting, so plan on eating beforehand because it'll probably extend at least a couple hours, but I'm hoping it's, it's informative for those that would like to get up to speed with, um, the IZ policy and procedures before it goes to, uh, the planning board and then eventually with the recommendation to you, the council. Craig, I don't know if you received this letter, but the council did, I believe. And it's a letter from, and if you haven't, I'll certainly give you my copy. It's a letter from RE/MAX. You did receive that from Phyllis?
I did, yes.
Can you, I was a little bit confused about what she's referring to and I know it's related to the south end of Central Avenue with the geotechnical issues we're having and have had, uh, with that 90-degree turn and the proximity to the river. Can you remind me, what is our concept at this point for addressing that issue?
Yeah. In fact, I'm hoping to schedule this for a work session.
Okay.
In the coming, um, month or so, um, we have a public, our, our second public meeting for the Central Avenue project is, um, I believe the 18th or 19th of March. And, um, my goal was to get, um, a work session, uh, with council before that, but the, the recommended alternative, um, to mitigate that slump area is to turn Central Avenue into a one-way northbound, um, from essentially from 6th to 5th. So that southbound traffic would not be permitted to go. They, you'd have to stop in front of the park and turn around. Northbound traffic would be allowed to continue through, um, from Spokane Avenue, um, onto Central. And so I can go through all the details in the geotechnical report and, and talk about that. RE/MAX is, is clearly opposed to that. The other alternative that we had, um, which was actually the recommendation of the geotechnical engineer was to, to close that road simply because maintaining a road on top of that lightweight fill that was installed is just going to be a, um, a permanent maintenance issue. Um, and we'll be spending quite a bit of money to, to maintain that roadway. But, um, it became pretty clear at the first public meeting that, um, we'd need to at least maintain one-way traffic. RE/MAX, of course, um, as well as, I believe, one or two of the other business owners are, are requesting that we reconsider, um, installing or reconstructing a two-lane road. Um, but I'll be presenting to council kind of all the details as well as the cost estimates.
Before that next public hearing, are you hoping?
Correct.
Okay. And are those public hearings, public meetings, I should say? Have you held those during the day or is it the evening, in the evenings?
Nope, those are in the evening.
Okay.
Um, the, this will be the second one. The first one, uh, was last fall.
Okay.
Typically do them at 6:30 PM.
Okay. And we'll be informed of when that meeting's scheduled, just in case we want to show up?
Sure.
Great. Appreciate that. Had the, um, opportunity to join Dana and Adam this past week in Helena for the 2019 Executive Forum for Mayor, City Managers and Administrators. I missed the one-day training session on Wednesday, but I was able to make it over to join Adam and Dana at the state Capitol on last Thursday. I think we had a very productive and informative meeting with, uh, Keith Regir, as well as David Fern, on Thursday morning at about eight o'clock. We discussed a variety of topics of interest to the city and the county for that matter, um, such as the resort tax, uh, some of the local option sales tax bills that are being, um, introduced this session, as well as infrastructure, uh, AIS, the Flathead Basin Commission, and of course ongoing, uh, support for our ASF, AIS efforts statewide. Um, we also met with representatives informally from the Montana League of Cities and Towns. Uh, Dana and I actually attended, uh, a tax, uh, committee meeting and one of the proposed bills, which was being sponsored by a junior legislator from Billings, uh, would actually require all municipalities with tax increment finance districts to create citizen advisory steering committees before any decisions are made regarding TIF allocation. Believe there were about 10 public comments. Dana and I actually ended up commenting just because it was timely and we know a little bit about TIF. Uh, but I believe all 10, uh, speakers voted strongly in opposition to the bill, so I don't really see that, uh, making it through or out of committee for that matter. So that was a good time. I wanted to thank Adam for inviting me to that. Um, and on that note, Adam celebrated a two-year anniversary with the city. Believe it or not, it's been two years. I believe last Friday was your two-year anniversary. So just, um, big shout out to Adam. It's been a, I'm sure a steep curve. Um, you've handled it well and you're doing a great job and it's a pleasure having you onboard and I hope we have you for another two years. So, and I'm sure we will. On that note, I think that's all I had. Anything further from staff? How about council? One other item, Richard?
Do.
Okay.
The fact that we've saved $20,000. The fact that we've saved $20,000 already, uh, in our lighting, that was in Dana's report. And, uh, that was that very last sentence of that report. And, uh, that's huge.
Yeah, it is.
Uh, and, uh, I, I think that's just a start of hopefully better things to come.
Great. That is good news indeed. Anything further from council? We are adjourned. Thanks very much.
Great. Katie, I said you.